Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, January twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-two, and as my grandkids would say, happy Tuesday. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte and the governing body of all other special assessment and taxing districts, which said Board Solax is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. So at this time Kylie would you, I'm gonna call the meeting to order and Kylie, will you take role, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Here.
Supervisor Starkey?
I'm here.
Supervisor Short?
Here.
Chair Hemmingson?
I'm here.
I'll make note that Supervisor Berkowitz is absent.
Thank you. And now before I'll take a moment of reflection. Thank you. Now if you'll all stand Supervisor Short is gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have any new employees? Neil?
None today.
Thank you. County Council, any actions from closed session?
Not today.
Thank you. At this time, I would request any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Are there any such items? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to brief reports, announcements relative to county programs by supervisors. We're gonna start with Supervisor Starkey.
Thank you Chair. And so since our last meeting, I attended the first five meeting, we received the school readiness report, which out of two hundred and thirteen kindergarteners that were surveyed, and they had the readiness based on that. What is really important for us to understand is that the percentage of students ready for school grade varied greatly from county or places in our county. Margaret Keating had a sixteen percent readiness while Redwood had seventy-one percent. So I think there's a lot of work for us to be doing to make sure that we are providing available services throughout the entire county. The significant predictors of readiness is absolutely is making sure you read to your kids or read, talk, sing, whatever you need to do to your kids at least five or more times a week. I attended the regular solid waste management meeting. We continue to move forward with SB thirteen eighty-three. And in the past few weeks, we've really begun to make some significant progress. Thank you to Randy Hooper, who continues to really drive this forward and make sure that this is happening. He's working closely with Ted Ward and Mary Piddo, so shout out to them. I attended a point in time training session. Tomorrow is our point in time count. We start that. It starts now for a week. And so from this week forward, we're going to be work going out in the community and counting the homeless so that we have an accurate reflection of the number of homeless so that we can make sure we ask for the appropriate amount of services in our community. So I'll be there tomorrow at the rec center is where that'll be staged. For that Roy Jackson and Rebecca Green have done a remarkable job. It is a huge undertaking to coordinate all these services that they are doing. And and they're just an incredible job to them. And I toured the Klamath Glen and the levee with, I wanna say levee, I don't know if that's just a cool way to say Levi, I don't know. With Richard Mello, so I just wanted to take a time to thank him for him to take me on that tour. We'd recently been in a two by two with the Euro tribe and they were talking about this water pump system. And I had no idea what they were talking about. So Richard took the time to show me that system that they have that actually protects the Klamath Glen in the event of some flooding. So we're working to make sure that we have staff down there and I know the audience or the people on YouTube can't see this, but it is just a sea of road workers right now. So I'm so happy that I get to talk about their their new boss, Richard Mello. So and then I also got to see the hard work that you guys were doing at at Minno Creek Road. So since you're the road departments here, I'm gonna give you a shout out and thank you very much for all the hard work that you do to keep the roadway safe. So thank you for that. I coordinated some resources between animal animal control, which was formerly known as livestock. We're gonna change that name hopefully today. But there was some dogs that were loose out in the Fort Dick area that were killing cats. So I was able to work with Justin Riggs from the animal control as long with the sheriff's department and the residents and within like a matter of hours of us coordinating those services, we were able to identify the owners of those dogs. And the process is now being taken to any criminal proceedings or whatever now is up to animal control in the sheriff's department. But we were able to identify the owners of the dogs. After that, I did tour animal control with Justin Rids. Justin, thank you for taking the time to show me everything. I'm really grateful for you. I know this is a lot of work out there and hopefully today we're gonna be able to come up with some solutions for some of the problems that have been going on out there. Since I toured there, I've been volunteering there on the weekends. And it's actually been kind of refreshing to see exactly what it is that you do there. So I'll continue to do that through February. And took a lot of calls and concerns regarding the tsunami. We did have a tsunami on January fifteenth. A little glitch in our reporting system, but that's been corrected. So luckily it was a very minor tsunami, no big damage. But we were able to fix that glitch and and hopefully that won't be repeated again. But things happen, so I'm not pointing fingers or anything like that. And had a discussion with Amber Weir regarding youth vaping and ideas that we need to do to keep the vaping that propaganda really away from our youth. I attended a harbor commission meeting, I attended a city council meeting, had a lot of discussion with regard to our local jail medical along with regional discussion through the CSG stepping up. Just coming up with ways to make sure that we are providing the proper services to our incarcerated population that is also affordable within our budget. So I attended the MHSA stakeholders meeting. And yesterday I did attend a LAPCO meeting for Supervisor Berkowitz, which I am sure Supervisor Short will expand upon further. That is my report.
Thank you Supervisor Short.
I don't know that there is much to to expand on with the LAPCO meeting, but yes, we did talk about municipal services reviews and severe influence for three organizations in Klamath. That is has not been finalized, but part of that discussion was the the Hunter Valley Community Services District and granting them powers to be a kind of a recreation department in in efforts toward them being able to run their little park in their in the subdivision there. Also attended city council meetings. Also with Supervisor Starkey, attended the solid waste meetings and the special meeting that we talked about contracting and SB thirteen eighty-three and and I too would like to reiterate that that Randy Hooper is is an outstanding asset. They're working really hard toward implementation of that along with Ted. So definitely thank you Valerie for that. Kudos is definitely in order. Attended North Coast DMS Medical Advisory Committee meeting. And then subsequent to that had a special meeting with Larry Karstadt, the Executive Director of North Coast DMS and Joel to discuss Del Lord Ambulance's request for exclusive operating area here in Del Norte County and that discussion is is ongoing. Big thing that I was invited to attend was a tour of Hope Village in Medford. Daphne Lambert invited me over along with many members of her board there at Don't Don't Mission Possible. Chief Griffin was also in attendance there and Rogue Retreats really was welcoming to us, wanted to answer any and all questions that we had was very encouraging. And then they showed us their urban campground. They their what they call their Kelly's Shelter. And then at the end of the day, they showed us Hope Village, which is the tiny house village. Very, very remarkable programs that they have there. Try to implementation, they they had a lot of pushback from the community and even the police chief saying that, you know, their urban campground was gonna attract the crime to the area and Hope Village was gonna do the same thing. Come to find out, not a single complaint has been lodged with the police department there and Chad, the the founder of Rogue Retreats, he said that the police chief actually called me and apologized, said, I gotta, I gotta eat my words. So it was it was an amazing three areas there. All three of them, you could not tell that they were there until you were right on top of them. The Hope Village, if anybody's familiar with Medford, Hope Village is on McAndrew's Road. When we pulled up there, I I told them I I've driven by this, I don't know how many times. I had no idea it was here. Nice gated little house village there, super clean and just just it was amazing. So it's encouraging and I'm hoping that the Del Norte Mission Possible is able to move forward with something similar in our community because the you know, getting homeless people out of survival mode to where they're committing small crimes. Some of them getting fined or 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 these kind of things, you know, they don't show up for court because they don't aren't able to pay the fines or or whatever reason they have for showing up for court. Well, then they get a warrant out for their arrest and then they go to jail and that causes more pressure on our criminal justice system. You get them out of survival mode and that goes away. So they saw a pretty significant decrease in petty crimes in the in the Medford area. Also wanted to say that senior citizens are the fastest growing segment of our homeless population. And and it was sad that they they found a they found an eighty year old woman living in a cardboard box in the green belt in Medford. Through Rogue Retreats, they found somebody to donate her a modular home in a park. But she was living on social security. So her monthly income was not enough to live in the park. So it's it's kind of devastating to hear those those kind of very, very sad stories. But I just wanted to say I appreciate the work that Del Norte Mission Possible is doing. Daphne is Daphne's working hard at it and I hope to see some some action towards something like that in the future. Also want to say we got resignation letters from Autumn Luna this this past week and also from Heather Snow. I want to say that they'll be missed and good luck to them as they move on to bigger and better things. And that is my report.
Yes, thank you. And I'd like to apologize for the whoop whoop on that. I thought you were going in a different direction. I thought we were gonna be the first at something that was good, but we're not. We're first at something bad. So Supervisor Howard.
Thank you Chair. As part of the Agriculture, Environment, Natural Resources Committee of CSAC, we're working, been working for a couple of years now on a sea level rise policy agreement with the California Coastal Commission and a way to return local control to the counties, these coastal counties. It's been a nightmare of an issue for most counties that have their local coastal plans that they work with and feel like they're constantly under attack to create policies that mesh with what the coastal commission's policies are, which is basically trying to move inland. And as many of you are aware, I've been really harping on this for the last several years, especially here in Del Norte County. You've got the coastal commission on the west and you've got the Forest Service on the east and slowly but surely in a county where we're eighty percent public land, our private property rights are eroding along with that. And it's gonna be a takings case one day. I'm not entirely sure how it's gonna result, but we're trying to create some policies that allow government to government relations to slow some of this activity and allow more common sense approaches. Appreciate staff Supervisor Hemmingson participating on this commission. In addition, Heidi Kunksel for taking a hard look and approach with the sea level rise policy. And hopefully we'll have some better better conversations with the California Coastal Commission. That seems to have so much influence on our small little county of Del Norte. In addition, working with staff on the draft fire minimum fire safe standards. This is one of those those deals where our our small communities and Gasky, Hiuchi, Smith River, Klamath, we're all gonna be impacted by these fire safe fire safe standards. It was a lot of common sense law that they thought they were putting in place, but some of this law has unintended consequences. And what we're seeing come out is we might make everybody's it might make a lot of things unaffordable for you to just go out and build a home where you purchased that dream property several years ago. So we're working to get some language in there that'll either allow for some exemptions or some more common sense approaches that makes sense for these rural communities that battered battle this every day. Supervisor Starkey mentioned also participated in the geo medical conversation. I won't go into that any further. Also participated in a Crescent City Oversight Board meeting. In addition, on the tsunami warnings, received several calls and concerns associated with that. And I'm glad some of those issues are addressed. We certainly wouldn't want to see that happen during a larger event. We talk about this a lot here, me especially. So to see see some communication errors in our technical systems does allow a little bit of concern. But I'm glad we found the problem and fixed it. But for one, I'm also very appreciative of Kimmy Scott, our ex operational emergency services manager stepping in on a moment's notice and really taking charge and helping to direct a lot of what we saw that day of the of the tsunami warning coming out. So really appreciate that. Today, you may or may not be aware, but between Hiuchi and Gasky, there's some hazard tree removal. There's been a lot of work on one ninety-nine recently to get the hazard trees out of the right away of one ninety-nine. Don't need any more events like we've seen in the past. Also attended air quality board meeting and then working with the community service district, the Smith River, there's been some a broken pipe in the right away of the Rowdy Creek Bridge. I know they're doing their best to return water to about the eighth residence on Friday Drive. They're without water right now. But hopefully we could come up with some good solutions to work together in partnership to make an unfortunate event come out in a promising way. And that's all I have to report Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yes, thank you Supervisor Howard. Yeah, I had a few meetings also had an RCRC meeting, which is the world counties meeting, which we were supposed to have in person, but the county health officer in Sacramento decided there would be no in-person meetings. So we were, we went virtual along with that. So we went virtual and RCRC is always always has a Golden State Finance Authority meeting within that meeting. So I attended that also had a meeting with our airport director discussing some future activities at the airport. I had a a ramp meeting, which is a risk assessment management plan meeting for the Dungeons Crab Industry. I attended Senator McGuire's Town Hall COVID Town Hall meeting online. Supervisor Howard mentioned the A E N R meeting, the Agriculture, Environment, and Natural Resources meeting. I attended that. I did a gender review. And then I had a North Coast Resource Partnership meeting. And that was it for me. So with that, we are going to move on to the consent agenda.
Chair, can we just make a note that on item number ten, there will be a couple corrections to it due to typos?
Sure.
Thank you.
And those have been done?
Those have already already been corrected. Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move full item seven for some discussion.
Sure. Why don't we do that right now then?
Okay, I've invited Justin to come give us a little talk about animal services. I thought it'd be a good time to maybe have him explain what they do, maybe clear up some misconceptions about what animal controls role is and anything else you'd like to add.
Absolutely perfect.
Thank you for being here, Justin.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. So I've asked for this division name change because I feel that our prior name of livestock really only encapsulates a small part of what we do in that in that division of animal services. So we have two major components to animal services. One is out in the field. The other is in our shelter. So out in the field, we have our humane enforcement program, which has been a big one for us in recent years. So that's making sure animals are being housed and cared for properly, that they have the medical attention that they need and that they have appropriate shelter. So we, you know, sometimes we we start with education, but if that doesn't work out, you know, we have stronger actions we can take to make sure those animals are being cared for. We deal with a lot of public nuisance issues. This can be everything from, you know, minor dog barking to, you know, the animals that are running at large and causing property damage. There's potentially dangerous and vicious dog investigations where there's actually dogs attacking either other animals or people. We investigate dog bites and quarantine dogs at the shelter if necessary. You know, determine their vaccination status and make sure that a member of the public is informed of that so they and their physician can take the appropriate actions. We patrol for dogs running at large and conduct licensing enforcement out in the field. Dogs are required to be licensed in Del Norte County so that we have a record of rabies vaccination and who's responsible for the animal. So you know, when there is a problem, it's really important that those things have been done because if they haven't, it makes it much harder for us to follow up and take care of the issue. And we also remove dead animals from county roadways. Back at the shelter side of things, you know, we take care of any domestic animal in the county that needs to be impounded so that, you know, can dogs are what we're known for. But of course, you know, we have sometimes have other types of animals. Right now we have goats and a horse. You know, we've we've been known to have a lot of bunnies, but it can get more exotic. You know, we can, we've had llamas and emus and all kinds of interesting things over the years. So sometimes I feel like old McDonald out there a little bit. But taking care of all the animals at our shelter is a three hundred and sixty-five day a year task. There's no days off for that. They they need us. They're relying on us. So we've got a lot of hardworking staff and volunteers that make that happen. Every day, all the kennels have to be scrubbed, animals fed, medications given, you know, their health checked on. You know, and we have to make sure that they're buttoned back up and safe, clean enclosures with water and that their needs are attended to. Our volunteers help us see to their enrichment needs too. You can't just lock a dog up and not do anything fun with them. So they get walks. We have a network of trails there at the facility that are really helpful. We have, they have outdoor enclosures that they're moved to in the daytime. The Humane Society of Del Nord and our volunteers have really helped to improve those enclosures as of late. So they get out into a nice ten by ten area that's got toys and enrichment items for them. Of course, our goal in having them at the shelter, if an owner doesn't come and get their dog out is that someone's going to adopt them and give them a good home or we'll transfer them to another rescue that can help us accomplish that task. So that that's our mission is to care for them all until they find those forever homes. Anyone wanting to support us in that mission is always welcome to, you know, give us a call and ask what items we need at the time. That's probably the best thing to do because it can really vary. We're always looking for volunteers. We've gotten some great publicity lately on that and have been getting a lot of volunteer applications. There's a lot of ways to help out with the dogs, everything from walking to fostering to taking pictures and just kind of helping them come out of their shell and spending some time with them. So I really appreciate the opportunity to come and talk about these two missions that we have today. And I appreciate the support and accomplishing them.
Thank you, Justin. Great, Justin. Thank you so much. Any questions from board?
No, I just want to reiterate. I mean, I I went out there last Thursday for three hours and then Friday, Saturday, Sunday for two hours each and and I got to do everything as far as picking up the poo and scrubbing those kennels. And it is a lot of work and it's done on a daily basis. And when they have thirty plus dogs that you're cleaning thirty plus kennels, it is it's taxing. You know, I slept for really good Thursday and Friday nights. So but you you do a remarkable job out there. We'll talk about the you're on the agenda again a little bit later for a new position, but I just wanted to say thank you. And I do think this name change is more reflects what is happening out there. It's the services. So I appreciate you, Justin.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, Justin. Appreciate it. Also, item number six, I believe there's a typo collective impact from July first, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I think it should be Kylie, is that correct?
I'll have to double check, but yeah, I will make the correction or review the agreement and correct it.
It's on the agree, I mean, it's in the
The recommendation.
In the recommendation.
Yeah, that was my bad. So I apologize.
I think it's just missed there. So I just didn't want to think that we were going backwards, even though we can't go from July. I don't think we can go that direction. Anything else on the consent agenda? Any public comment on the consent agenda only? Please.
Hi, Lindisso County. I noticed on that we're giving some healthy raises to department heads. And in the same breath that I hear the empathy come about how you're worried about homeless and but all it is is words coming from your mouth. My neighbor, he gets seven hundred dollars a month to live on. Sometimes he can't afford to pay his water or sewer bill. And I feed him every day. I make sure he has a meal every day. If people cannot live on a hundred thousand dollars a year in Del Norte County, there's something wrong. You folks voting in yourselves and department heads. These wages are these increasing wages and then you're financing accrued pension debt? How does that? How does that work? Are you gonna run out of money and you won't be able to pay the pensions in the future? I was sick about this when I read about this last night. I I don't know. I don't know what you're thinking, but if the public here wasn't so apathetic, everyone of you'd be off the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment on the consent agenda items only?
Good morning. Thank you Chair. I'm Brandon Bieber, Smith River resident. I'm here to express my disappointment in seeing this board want to approve line item number five. This amendment, I'm not sure what the legality is in amending something for seven times the original agreed amount. Typically, an amendment can be modified up to a percentage of the original amount. But here, you initially approved some $200,000 plus budget not to exceed. $200,000 and some change, and now we're back requesting 1.4 or 5 million. When did government become a medical provider? That is not your role. I mean, we have a lot of things we can do in this community, but government should not be providing medical treatment. I believe this is a gross misappropriation of funds. I don't believe that amending this is legal. I think it should be a new agreement. And I ask that you remove line item number five from the consent agenda. I also request that you postpone giving department heads. Raises at this time.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment on on consent agenda items only?
Chair, I have one online.
Okay.
Robert, you are on.
Hi, guys. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, this is Robert. I'm not, I haven't had enough time to really look at the consent agenda, but online, a member of the public can mention that the board. And the consent agenda is going to be, you know, basically authorizing raises. I'm not really sure if it's true, but if it is, I think I think that item should be taken separately. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further public comment on consent agenda items? Seeing none, then we'll bring it back to the board. I will entertain a motion.
I will motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. I have a motion.
Well, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments from board members? Kylie, would you please pull a vote?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move on to our 1025 time. Oh, yeah, actually.
Oh, you don't want to. That's fine.
Yeah, let's do. Let's. I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. Supervisor Starkey, you have a. Resolution.
I do, Chair, and I I'm sorry I interjected like that.
No, no, that's I was just looking at time and wasn't looking at content. So thank you very much.
So I I'm going to read into a proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte observing the Seroptimist International of Crescent City Stop Trafficking Awareness Campaign. So whereas the Seroptimist International is committed to improving the lives of women and girls in local communities and throughout the world. Whereas Seroptimist International launched its trafficking awareness campaign project called Seroptimist Stop Trafficking. On January 11th, 2009, the National Day of Human Trafficking Awareness. Whereas the Seroptimist International of Crescent City has joined this with the Seroptimists around the world to raise awareness about the devastating problem of human trafficking, sexual exploitation and slavery. Whereas human trafficking is the illegal recruitment and movement of people for the purpose of sexual exploitation and forced labor. And whereas human trafficking is a worldwide epidemic with an estimated 40 million people, 10 million whom are children. In some form of slavery today and is tied to the second largest criminal enterprise. And whereas it is estimated that more than 20,000 people are trafficked in the United States each year. And whereas human trafficking is a $150 billion a year industry. And whereas we must all work together to end human trafficking and sexual exploitation around the world and in our local communities through education and awareness. Whereas all persons who actively oppose and report individuals, groups and organization who support, advance or commit acts of human trafficking and sexual exploitation. And whereas Seroptimist International of Crescent City promotes human trafficking awareness campaigns throughout the year. Now therefore be it resolved that the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors opposes human trafficking, sexual exploitation. And promotes human trafficking awareness through the year and recognizes the need for the annual proclamation to promote public awareness. Passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors, County of Del Norte, State of California on this 25th day of January, and I believe Susan DeHorty is here to accept this.
Thank you, Supervisor Starkey. I will be brief knowing that you have a scheduled item coming up. Trafficking is often referred to as modern day slavery. According to the definition used by Homeland Security, human trafficking involves the use of force, fraud or coercion to obtain some type of labor or sexual act. Sex trafficking is more than a basic definition, though. It is America's daughters, sisters, mothers, nieces, and sometimes America's sons. The fastest growing criminal industry in the world is the buying and selling of people. If you think of this crime and victims in the same manner a predator does as a product or a commodity, the rapid increase makes sense. A person can be sold for sex, a sex act numerous times while a drug or a weapon can only be sold once. The internet has also allowed this crime to escalate at an incredible pace. With our children online for schooling, often unsupervised for the past two years, the opportunities for predators to reach out have increased dramatically. The average age of entry into the sex trade is 15 years old for females, and it's believed to be even younger for males. And what is every 15 year old looking for? Love, understanding and acceptance. Coupled that with low self-esteem and it creates a perfectly vulnerable target. It's no surprise that this makes foster children and runaways among the easiest of the victims. Sex trafficking has been reported in all 50 states. This is not a crime that lives overseas despite what popular movies portray. This is a domestic problem requiring a national community wide response. California has more reported trafficking incidents than any other state. And while that might not seem unusual, given our population, California is number seven of all the states with the most trafficking reported per 100,000 residents. 55% of survivors report that they attended school at some point during their exploitation. Victims of this crime exist in society like everyone else. They walk into the same grocery stores, gas stations and down the same sidewalks. And think about that, we are walking past those victims with our eyes wide shut. 44% of victims reported that no one reached out and offered them help out of the life. With another 26 reporting rarely having been offered help. We as a community must do better. It's time to educate our population and be willing to say something when we see something that looks suspicious. The United Nations Office on Drugs and Crime has a list of indicators you can use to help identify victims. These indicators include appearing malnourished, appearing injured or having signs of physical abuse, avoiding eye contact, social interaction and law enforcement. Responding in manners that seem rehearsed or scripted, lacking personal identification documents, lacking personal possessions. Those are few very, very basic indicators. There's further information regarding indicators for community members, parents, caregivers, teachers and hospitality workers. And for any of you who would like more information, please feel free to contact me. Kylie has my contact information. Seroptimists in the National of Crescent City, along with the rest of the world, sincerely hopes that 2022 will allow us to be back in circulation, sharing opportunities for further training. To local agencies and government. Thank you again for today's proclamation. I appreciate it, Chair Hemmingson and supervisors.
Thank you, Susan. Appreciate everything you and your group do. Okay, I have a resolution here that I am going to read, a very honored to read, but with mixed emotions. On the one hand, it's well deserved. On the other hand, it's hard to lose a long time employee for the county. This is a resolution, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte, State of California. Honoring Jeff Daniels for his 32 years of public service as a county employee. Whereas Jeff was hired as road maintenance worker one on January 16th, 1989, becoming the fourth generation. Of his family to provide public service in maintaining county roads, following in the steps of his great grandfather, William Morrison. Grandfather Osborne Woolworth and Uncle John Woolworth. Whereas Jeff promoted into positions of greater responsibility over the 15 years, including road maintenance worker two. Grade checker operator two. Road foreman one and road foreman two. Whereas on October 2nd, 2009, in recognition of his experience and knowledge of local roads. Jeff promoted to county road superintendent as a position he would hold until his service retirement on December 30th, 2021. Whereas during his career, Jeff has worked on many projects, including fish friendly culvert replacements at Peacock Creek, Clark's Creek and Yonkers Creek. As well as the placement of a Bailey Bridge on Klamath Road to aid in emergency response following a flood event. Whereas also Jeff was instrumental in county receiving, in the county receiving numerous Title III RAC funding. Funds through the US Forest Services that resulted. Improved road conditions within the county's forest roads. The supplement of these funds helped offset lean years for the department's budget. Whereas Jeff has shown his dedication to the county being available 365 days a year, day or night, to respond to calls for fallen trees. Slides and other emergencies impacting the 300 miles of roads the roads division maintains and has consistently provided his. This community with work of highest professional caliber and ethical standards. Whereas Jeff has made the difficult decision to abandon his blaze orange wardrobe wardrobe. That he has modeled for 32 years, most notably on the cover of Caterpillar's Governmental Solutions Magazine. And devote his time to outdoor recreation and spending the time with his family and friends. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte, State of California. Do hereby commend Jeff Daniels for his 32 years of dedicated public service. To the people of Delmar County and wish him well in his personal endeavors endeavors in the years to come. Passed and adopted this 25th day of January, 2022.
I put it back on. Thank you. I appreciate it. There's a lot I could say, but I'll just keep it short. I'm just thankful that I've had the opportunity. To work here. It's been a pleasure. I have a lot of thanks to my parents for, you know, the work ethic they instilled in me. So that made it. That made it easier to do this job. So a lot of thanks there and thanks to Henry Ravitch for hiring me. So and John Woolworth for the the insight, you know, telling me to keep my nose clean and just work hard. You know, and then a lot of thanks to the personnel, you know, the guys, the ladies. Everybody behind the scenes that are actually doing the work. Sometimes I felt like I wasn't doing the work, but. You know, they it takes everybody to make it work and it's a team. It's a team effort. It really is. And I have a guy had a great support staff. And Kylie's a great boss. I thank her for, you know, being being the boss. She's she's understanding at times I. I I tickle on the gray side a little bit, you know. But for the most part, I I tried to do the best that I could for Del Norte County. So and it's my home. I love it here. Where my endeavors take me from here, only God knows, you know. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. And gosh, I've known most of you all my life. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, now we'll move on to our 1025 timed item. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there any public comment? Please come forward.
Linda Sutter County. I own my own home. I pay taxes. But I don't know. I don't know what the taxes are for. I thought it was to pay for services here. The services I do not get are police service. On Thanksgiving, I had officer. Was supposed to generate a report because of doxing that had occurred to me. She failed to generate the report. I found out. And she had every excuse under the sun why she couldn't generate a five minute report. So December 31st, I filed a complaint against Deputy Sloan. And to this date, no response from the Sheriff's Department. So I don't know why my I'm paying taxes for the Sheriff's Department because I don't get the service. I don't get fire service. When I spoke out against the fire tax, a former fire captain, John Maxwell. Impplied that they might not show up if I need fire service. Followed up with another former employee who said, hey, your life isn't worth saving. So I don't understand why I have to pay taxes for fire service. School district found out recently. The citizens oversight committee, which is under measure 39, our Prop 39. Prop 39 is an amendment to our California constitution. And we've been out of compliance, the the unified school district for three years. They they don't want to provide documents when you ask for super documents. Right now I'm taking my own money and doing a writ of mandate on them. This is outrageous. This kind of stuff in our community, we don't need it. And it's not just Linda Sutter's is happening to. I get people calling me instead of the darn police. When there's rape or anything else occurring. Why do I have to be the one? Folks, when are we going to tighten the belts? Instead of tightening the belts, you're giving everybody a raise. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
Thank you, Chair. This is Brandon again. I'd have a couple of comments on two different line items. Is it possible to have three minutes for each?
This is public comment. You have three minutes.
For each item or?
This is not an item. This is public comment.
Okay, thank you. Is Dr. Stutz available for any questions for? I'd like to. Have some questions regarding COVID. Does that need to wait for that agenda item to come up?
Yes.
I don't talk about it now.
Can you talk about it now if you want?
I'm just asking, what's the proper time to address?
This is for public comment. This is not question and answer. It's public comment. You make your comments to us.
We, on the agenda, you're still, you still have the health ordinance of October, August 26th. That's the outdated ordinance. I'm curious as to why you're not using the most recent November 3rd ordinance. I'd like the county to correct that. I've I talked about this at the last board meeting and I'm just not clear on. Which one and why the new whole health ordinance if we're not if we're not going to use it. That's all I got at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment?
Chair, I have one online.
Okay.
Robert, you are on.
Hello. Hi, Robert again. I just wanted to hit you guys up again, you know, about the cannabis taxes. From what I understand, you collect, you know, the 60 grand from me. And then you collect additional cannabis taxes from Elk Valley Ranchery. And probably I wouldn't have concern like a lot of the community because I would be ignorant. because I would be ignorant, but I've been participating in these meetings for, you know, ten, twelve years. And I watched the general fund grow and you just don't see the resources adding up, you know, and I hear everybody say, well, the cost of government grows, but I I see that as as something you consent to on the consent agenda usually. And so if we don't actually start earmarking, you know, funds that the community approves um for what we need, which I described like the bottom few rungs of a ladder. That's what we should invest into, you know, locally. Tourism's the lowest paying industry in the United States. And a bit less here because it's so seasonal. We don't have a cruise port that operates uh year-round. And so, you know, the last meeting to see that you want to investigate using borrow Boys Ranch, you know, as a tourist facility of some sort. You know, we bought a golf simulator and it just seems like we're not representing the average person in our community. And so that's why I'd like to see the cannabis taxes earmarked uh for a thrifty, you know, uh program that advantages disadvantaged youth. And there's a number of them in our community that could do a lot with sixty thousand or ninety thousand if we're talking about Elk Valley Rancheria. Um you know, but every time you guys, you know, approve something, you know, that sixty grand does look awfully small, you know, because you know, you spend it so quickly, you know, and it's and and it's it's something that's not popular to talk about, but it's pension debt, you know, and and that's how our general fund is is generally growing is with pension debt. And so someone like me, I could move into the city and save sixty thousand, or I could stop doing it and enjoy the rest of the last few years with my children in my home and and do something I can do with them, you know, like sewing clothing on the side of the road or whatever. And I'm not, I'm just surprised that you guys wanted to decide to say, hey, we'd like to keep you in the county. And by the way, I don't just collect sixty grand. I collect another twenty thousand in regular sales tax. You know, you guys got the one percent on the seven that you get. And then you got another one point that the community voted for. And I don't think the community would vote for these taxes if they, you know, paid attention to how they're spent. You know, my business, I I've been tempted to move fun money around on the sheets, you know, because I can't write off labor. I can't write off rent. And so when I've had the clothing shop, sometimes you get a little weird trying to think, well, how can I write off this guy? He's checking IDs, you know, he did sell a few shirts. But I don't want to see that in my government where our measure, you know, our our tax measure funds are being used for how they're, but we're just moving funds around to constantly use more money for less, it seems to me. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Chair, I do not have any more online.
Okay.
Chair, can I do a brief thing?
Sure.
Um we're required to orally report a summary of any adjustments to local agency salary schedules. So I just want to say on the record that it's a seven this year percent increase and one percent the next two years is the substance of what was approved.
Okay, thank you. So seeing no other public comment, we'll close the public comment period and we'll move on to our ten thirty timed item. Is Dr. Stutz on?
I am not seeing him at the moment. Let me just a few moments.
Okay, well, if he comes on, let us know, Kylie.
Yeah, I'm not seeing him right now, Chair.
Okay, and we'll go on to the ten forty timed item, which is our, which Barbara is gonna tell us all about our quarterly treasures report ending December thirty-first. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for approving another year of investment authority to me. Appreciate that. Okay, good to go. So yeah, just another quarterly treasures report. This is for quarter ending December thirty-first, twenty-one. Um portfolios looking pretty good. Actually, we closed it out at eighty-six million seventy-one thousand one hundred and ten dollars. Um forty-five percent of that is our local agency investment fund, which is our liquid account. About thirty-eight million in there. I have twelve, almost thirteen percent in CDs right now at eleven million dollars. Government agencies are holding steady at about thirty-five percent of the portfolio, which is thirty million dollars. Mitigation funds haven't changed on three million dollars in there. So this is, to be fully transparent, my statements here were exactly what I put in for last quarter. I haven't changed my philosophy that I still need to keep life somewhat heavy. And I'd like it to be less heavy. I think we need to get that down. I do agree with that, but um I do want to purchase shorter term investments and pick up some of that. And higher interest that's starting to come to fruition. Um actually, today I picked up a one-year, which I've never done, but I got fifty basis points higher than leave. Excuse me, I lost my. Um anyway, so I I fully intend to pick up as much um small, you know, small year, three-year, two-year investments, um just to to grab some more interest since life is so low right now. Can I move it?
Barbara, on the CDs, reading the report that was in the consent agenda, I'm just trying to make sure I read that part right. Are we capped at fifteen percent or CDs?
CDs are thirty percent. Yes. Mm-hmm. And I usually, obviously, there's usually only a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar FDIC cap on that, so I pick them up at two hundred and forty-five thousand.
Okay.
Um so CDs aren't as great as they used to be. Um and obviously, we can only do CDs um that are, you know, one-time investment, so I can't have five CDs in the same bank or the same entity. So it does become a challenge to get a full thirty percent of CDs purchased in a in a larger portfolio like this.
Alrighty, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, sorry, I don't know what's going on here. Okay. So interest earnings are getting, you know, obviously, it's going a little bit lower just because interest is lower. We have more money in life, which is lower. Um hopefully, we'll see that pick up um as I purchase some, you know, longer-term investments. It's it's still great, though. I mean, goodness, three years ago, it was pretty low. So I'm happy with where we're at and just keep plugging away at that. Get as much earnings as we can for our agencies. Um so Cal Trust, I don't have anything in the short-term account, but we do have a little bit in the medium-term account. Life, as you can see, is is low, twenty-one basis points. CDs are are okay. Um I'm not as interested in CDs right now as I'm in agencies, um three years, four years. And like I said, I just purchased a one-year at I think that one was a ninety basis point, so I picked that up and was happy to collect that. Um I think our portfolio still looks good. We are still overperforming in what um I can currently purchase right now. Given the the term in years is is pretty low versus how much I'm earning in the CD. So I think that um just kind of keep purchasing as the market allows and, you know, as we have that investment liquidity, then I will um just keep rolling things over and just, you know, do it, do what I can. Um so we, I purchased quite a bit of things this last quarter, eight point two million dollars to be exact, which is pretty hefty. I don't think I've ever purchased that much in one quarter, but again, when you see our cash flow, um you'll see why. Um we only had five hundred thousand dollars mature in a couple CDs. Um a lot of bullets as best I could, you know, trying to get as much um for those, those don't obviously earn as much. And then our cash flow, you could see December was pretty high. A lot of this is schools money, I'll be honest with you. You know, we're just getting a lot of stuff from the state. Um but I don't I don't want to just let it sit in life. I want to try to, you know, even if it's short-term, try to get as much money for them and for the other agencies as possible. So this was last year's, the twenty twenty cash flow, and it was pretty high as well. So it'll be just interesting to see what the next year brings for twenty twenty-two. With that, that is my report. If you have any questions.
Great. Thanks, Barbara. Appreciate it. Uh any questions from board members?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your hands-on approach. Any public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment and we have no Dr. Stutz. Is that right, Kylie?
I'm going to check one more time. Give me one moment. I'm not seeing him, Chair. I see that the Director of Health and Human Services is along. I don't know if she has an update um where he might be. I'm not sure, but I did reach out to him via email and
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Well, just let, just let us know if he shows up and we'll get him on as soon as we can.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to move on to our general government items. Item number twenty-five, approve the creation of an animal services supervisor one slash two position using measure R funds. And two, reclassification and range adjustment using measure R funds of the Animal Control Officer one slash two classification. And three, elimination of the vacant kennel attendant uh one slash two classification and for direct health and human or direct human resources division to amend the adopted staffing chart as requested by the agricultural cultural commissioner.
Move to approve.
I have a motion.
One second.
And a second. Any public comment?
This sudden. Well, I hope you all are enjoying that measure our money because, as you know, we've got a repeal to measure R. And so I hope that this position that you're going to be paying for with the measure our money is going to be able to be covered by our regular budget. And that's all I have to say about that. Mister Hemmings, please be a little bit kinder to people that are mixed up about how things are done here during public comment, because you seem really angry at this gentleman back here when he was trying to understand things. Thank you.
I apologize if I felt that there was any anger. There was no anger at all in what I was saying. I was just trying to be clear as all. Any other public comment on this item?
I don't have any online.
Okay, thanks Kylie. Would you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item number twenty-six, approve and authorize a step increase to A eleven step D effective September eleventh, twenty twenty-one for the Agricultural Commissioner as requested by us.
I will move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment?
Chair, I'm not seeing any online.
Seeing no public comment, then we'll bring it back to the board. Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, item number twenty-seven, accept the resignation of Heather Snow, Director of Health and Human Services.
Need to move to approve?
We need a motion, I guess. We have to accept it, I'm assuming.
I'm thinking she's going to go anyway, but I'll move to approve.
Well, I did have that conversation with her, so well, maybe we just won't accept this resignation. What are we going to do?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment?
Thank you, Chair. I apologize for uh any lack of procedure on my behalf.
Uh no need to apologize and
We'll just move on. Uh I do not think she should uh be allowed to resign. I think she should be fired with the public health ordinance. Uh she has harassed our community. She's terrorized our community. She's abusing our children. It's very unfortunate, you know, her department is supposed to educate, inform, and yet they're implying jail time and uh fines for not wearing a mask. I think this is illegal on her behalf to threaten people like that. It's not right that you're letting this happen to our community. She should be fired and jailed.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Chair, I'm not seeing any online.
Thank you. Would you please pull the?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item number twenty-eight, discuss the use of AB three sixty-one, which allows us to do teleconferencing for future board meetings uh due to the ongoing local emergency due to COVID nineteen pandemic. Um anyway, this is an item that I put on to see what the board's thoughts were on possibly uh going in that direction if uh I guess if we have a a uh public health order to not have public meetings, I certainly think we need to have an avenue to to do something. Anybody want to speak up?
Uh I like the way it's been going. I really do. I, we have a hybrid meeting system here. We could meet in person, which I I like getting the feedback and folks could come in online and um if there is a emergency, but I I'm I guess I'm not seeing the numbers that would indicate an emergency is necessary for us to react to at this time, maybe in the future, but definitely not now.
Yeah, and I'm going to echo that. I I think that um, you know, we're down a supervisor today. And we could be down one more and then then we wouldn't have a quorum uh beyond that, but with three. So you know, with the, if all of us stay healthy and all of us can operate and come to work, then we, our staff can be remote, but we can't. Is that correct, Joel?
Yeah, basically. You you can be remote if you follow the old teleconferencing rules where you post agenda where you are, but
Right. But my understanding with that is that we have, if we impose that resolution today, then we have to be remote. And I'd rather not do that. I'd rather if we, if say, you know, next Monday, the seventh, before our next meeting, you know, I end up having COVID, um and the three of you don't, you still can operate. If me and Chris both have COVID, then then we have a problem. Maybe we can do a special meeting um to impose that resolution, therefore we can go. So that's how I'd like to do it. I don't want to put anything in stone right now. I'd like to just use it as needed, if necessary.
I wasn't aware that there was a requirement that we, is there a requirement that we meet uh virtually if we?
There's, there's not a hard requirement. There is a a discussion or maybe even a debate throughout the county. If if you made a finding that it's unsafe to be here, then like you shouldn't be here, kind of a logic thing. Uh but there's, there's also another exception in AB three sixty-one. It's just for, uh there are recommended social distancing measures. It's not necessarily you make a finding that you can't be safe together. Um you know, I I think you could do a hybrid meeting if that's helpful. Um we can, we can look more into that. Um but as far as the the kind of the arc of of the process, you know, if there is some kind of uh outbreak, cases spike, you know, the next board meeting could just be online. And then thirty days after that, you have to make the findings. So there really doesn't have to be anything that happens ahead of time. There's no reason you can't play it by ear.
Hmm, yeah, and I just wanted to open this up for discussion. That was my whole intent, wasn't uh put to put the uh a a resolution uh on the agenda, uh but I just wanted to to open it up for discussion to see how board members felt. I I assume that if if the need came, we would use it.
Can we, can we make a contingent resolution that if we have?
Well, like Joel says, we don't, we can have the first meeting. We can have a meeting that is virtual without doing the resolution. And then after that meeting, at some point within that thirty days, we have to have a finding of this is why we had that meeting, because we had an emergency of something. So it's just discussion. I I didn't realize that till Joel brought that to my attention, that uh that the first meeting. I thought we had to have the resolution in place to do it, but that's not the case.
I thought so, too.
We can do it. And then it then we say, well, this is the reason that we did it was because we had this emergency or two people had COVID or whatever it is. So just a discussion item to talk about that, no action to be taken, uh but I will accept any public comment um on this discussion item.
We're never going to get rid of COVID. It's always going to be here. And if if this is how you want to choose to live your life is remotely, then kudos, but not me. And I'm glad that you folks are deciding to keep it the way it is, because this is this is, people are over it. We're over it, okay? I may oink like a pig before I eat my dinner, or I may have big turds out in my yard like a cow. And I may every once in a while, but by God, that ivan necking sure worked for me. Thank you. And I may every once in a while, but by God, that Ivanekin sure worked for me, thank you.
Any other public comment?
I don't have any online.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to budget transfers. Uh, we have a budget transfer zero one dash zero three and the amount of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Within the sheriff's budget unit to purchase a rapid response or to purchase rapid response ballistic shields and helmets. Uh, item number thirty, which is transfer, uh, zero one dash zero five and the amount of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Within the OES budget unit to provide funding to purchase law enforcement safety equipment requested by the sheriff. And number thirty-one, uh, which is, uh, transfer zero one dash zero six in the amount of eleven thousand dollars. Within the Sheriff K nine budget unit to cover boarding costs created by the loss of a canine handler and traveling training expenses. For the new canine handler and sergeant.
Move to approve budget items twenty-nine, thirty and thirty-one.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any public comment?
I have none online, Chair.
Seeing no public comment, then we will, uh, move on to the poll vote.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to legislative and budget issues, and we have one discussing give possible direction to staff on a contribution of funds. To the Tri-Agency Economic Development Authority and to discuss and give possible direction to staff to include. A contribution in future proposed budgets as an annual contribution as requested by the Tri-Agency Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this item is back on the agenda in an attempt to answer quite a few questions. That Supervisor Starkey brought forward and, and people in the community trying to. Correct, correct some misconceptions that, that were put out there. This, uh, board report was drafted by Joel, I thought he did an excellent job of doing the research on. Past dealings of the Tri-Agency and, uh, just wanted to open it up for discussion again, hopefully. The questions have been answered. To everyone's liking.
I do have some questions, but Supervisor Starkey?
I was hoping to save my comments for after there's a motion on the table.
Well, I, it's, uh, it's a. It's not, uh, it's only an, an action as far as giving direction to staff, so it's not an actionable item.
Okay, so, um, I, I do have quite a few things to say. But my first questions are gonna be for Joel, our county council, have you reviewed all the documentation that was generated? By the Tri-Agency in the attempt to resolve this outstanding law?
Um, I have, um, and so did Liz Cable before me, I mean, this has been a long process. We've hired outside counsel even to collect.
Okay.
What security that could be, I think we're pretty very, we're very confident now, after going through all the documents many times through many attorneys that we are. We're right about this.
Okay, so I guess I wanted to, uh, just not catch off guard there, so, so after reviewing all the, those documentation. Are we legally, the county of Del Norte, are we legally responsible for paying back the debt to the USDA rural development?
We are not, as long as Tri-Agency doesn't dissolve. Tri-Agency, when it dissolves, the JPA says the debts have to be paid. Which is basically the member agencies would have to pay it so it can dissolve. So if it continues to exist, there is a, a strict good, safe buffer between the county and Tri-Agency.
Okay, cuz now I'm, I'm reading the section five point oh three, the specific power section F. Uh, to incur debts, liabilities or obligations, provided that no debt liability or obligation shall constitute a debt liability. Or obligation to the county, city or district, which is the harbor. So, and, and then in two thousand twelve, an attorney weighed in on it and said, regardless of that debt, the Tri-Agency is the one responsible, not the county itself. That's my understanding is that by creating this JPA, you insulate the county, the city and the harbor. For being the agencies responsible for that debt, am I wrong?
No.
Okay.
That's what I, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so, so the county of Del Norte is not responsible, even if the Tri-Agency dissolves, they can't dissolve with that debt.
But, yeah, basically Tri-Ancy can't dissolve.
Right.
So in order.
Continue to exist.
They'll continue to exist, uh, defunct.
Okay.
There is one case out there. Um, that suggests that Tridency could kind of be pierced like a shell corporation. Um, if they're not really a viable entity, but the court in that case said, we can resolve this on other grounds, we don't have to resolve it. So there's no like actual case that says that they can pierce Tridency.
Okay.
It's an abstract possibility and maybe an equitable argument, but there's no really strong legal case that says you can do that.
Okay, and, and this one's not meant to be a gotcha, this is at three thirty this morning, so I know, I typically like to prepare people with the questions I'm gonna ask. But under section seven oh two on page twenty-one of the JPA agreement. It says the expenditures of funds contributed to the authority by the parties heretofore shall only be used. For ordinary administrative operating expenses of the authority. And for payment of fees and costs incurred or to be incurred by the authority in connection with the preparation, filing and processing. Of one or more applications for federal financial assistance. So in that, I, I don't know that we can even use any money contributed to this to pay back the debt. Based on how this is worded here, so, um, cuz it seems to me that any of the expenses contributed. By the member agencies can only be used for ordinary administrative operating expenses or for fees to apply, apply for grants. Does that seem correct, or I, I kinda did, I'm sorry, I didn't give you time to, to think about that one.
Yeah, I mean, I, I haven't thought about it, I don't really see why, you know, debt service can't be an ordinary administrative expense. But I, I mean, we can look more closely at that.
Okay.
I mean, if, if it's impossible for Tridency to use the member agency's money to pay its debt and Tridency can't operate. Then it's just stuck forever, so the JP would just have to get amended, but I. I don't really see why ordinary operating administrative expenses can't be loan service.
Okay, and then I'll just go with my final comments is, and it's quite a bit, but you could bear with me. Um, it just seems to me that the founding fathers of this JPA agreement had the vision to use the taxpayers' money really judiciously. Um, the clause in the agreement that any funds contributed to the Tri-Agency from the members could only be spent on operating expenses. Whether or not that includes paying past debt, that is something to be decided apparently at a later date. Um, but it further insulated the member agencies from having to pay bad debt. So the agency, the Tri-Ancy of, in and of itself is responsible, but city, the county and the harbor have been insulated from that. So I just want the, the community to know that since November ninth, I've talked to over a dozen community members. Uh, some are in favor of the Tri-Agency, some are opposed. But, uh, you know, they're opposed to the Tri-Ancy request to revitalize themselves and, and pay off the poor lending decision of the previous board. And to move forward with really the only, uh, project which they publicly shared is this wind power. Um, additionally, I just sifted through piles of documentation provided to me by county council, I went into Joel's office and he had boxes of things. And I went through all of that, I attended meetings with the Tri-Agency and the Economic Development Corporation. I reviewed all the initial MOUs and the modified MOUs and I really worked to educate myself on the history of the Tri-Agency. So that I could make an informed decision on how to spend the taxpayers' money, should this agenda, um, item make it way back before us? Like it has today, so I've learned a great deal, I, I've, I've can see now where the mistakes were made. I tried to fill in the blanks where there was no information. Um, and I've, I've had to ask myself, can I confidently vote to use the taxpayers' money to rectify the poor lending decisions? Of the previous staff or the members? So if I could justify the benefits of the Tri-Agency outweighing the cost, I would be fully supportive of this request. However, in the past fifty years, since the inception of the Tri-Agency as a JPA. There were only three specific successes referenced in the paperwork before us today. A boat basin slash dock that was completed in the seventies or eighties, something at the airport, but is not specific. And a vision for the visitor center, which I can attest has had a profitable outcome. Additionally, there's been businesses assisted, but unfortunately, none of those businesses are still thriving today. So when considering the costs involved, what is being requested here today, up to seventy thousand dollars a year to hire a director and a staff. As well as pay back a defaulted loan, I'm not confident that this just isn't another layer of wasted government money. We're an incredibly small community, in my experience, whether we live in Smith River or in the center of Crescent City, we consider ourselves one community. I believe that we are throwing good money after bad and that isn't in our community's best interest. The Tri-Agency has had fifty years to prove that they are a worthwhile agency and they have fallen short. So what is before us today is an argument of whether we continue the Tri-Agency, which I would be a resounding no. But instead, a request to budget seventy thousand dollars from the general fund. I would rather see us hire a grant rider that can be utilized by the county and the city and perhaps even the harbor. In order to turn that seventy thousand dollar a year salary into potentially seventy million dollars in grants. So with all this said, if we owe a debt to the federal government and there is some legal way in which we should settle our debt. I propose that we do that. We do not want to be that county who does not honor our obligations. However, if we are to find a way to legally contribute the money to pay off the bad debt. I can only agree to doing that if the total amount owed, which is roughly a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. It's the two eighty-five of the loan minus the hundred and fifteen that's in the bank. If that is to be divided by the county, the city and the harbor. We got ourselves into this situation fifty years ago and each agency throughout the years have had some horse in this race. And we need to get each other out of this together and equitably, that is my opinion on the matter.
Thank you, anybody else got anything to say? I do have a couple of comments, if you want me to go first. Go ready here. On the one thing, one hand, I think we need, uh, uh, the Tri-Agency, I think it's a, it's a good organization. It unfortunately got hooked up with the Economic Development Council, or a corporation, excuse me. And went in a, in a wrong direction, that's how this debt got there in the first place. Um, and that was a, a board and a staff decision at that time. Um, I don't think this is insurmountable, I do think that there are a couple of things that I would like to see addressed. Um, I do think it's an obligation, uh, you know, we chose to support Tri-Ancy. Uh, from day one and we have done that, uh, in the past. Uh, and I think we should continue to do that, but I think there needs to be a little more equity as far as paying this loan back. Uh, between the county and the city especially, uh, and even the harbor. I, I think the percentages of, of paying back are a little bit off, the, the city I think should. Contribute a little more and maybe even the harbor. Um, since they're receiving a tax, the harbor is receiving a tax that we implemented and they're receiving all that money. Uh, I think there's opportunity there to, to increase, uh, their contribution. Uh, the city, I still, I believe still gets more TOT, uh, than the, than the county does. And that's what this is all about, is driving economic development. And so I think those resources should be, uh, uh, you know, a little closer to the percentages that the county has provided in the past. Um, I also, um. Don't know how the, um, the amounts, uh, the payback amounts, you know, how that mount was come up with, you know, and, on what we pay back. Um, maybe it doesn't have to be that much, although maybe that's a five-year plan, Joel, is that what the whole idea is?
Yeah, I don't remember how the specific amounts were arrived at, but it was some amount of the principal sitting at the bank and then the rest over five years.
Okay.
So that is for the percentages that were lined up, the seventy, thirty, ten, that was. Oh, Neil got me some past numbers from what was contributed by the organizations in the past, when they were contributing, so it's kind of a rough. Um, and, and I'm, I'm saying that's the past and this, we're trying to move on and we're trying to get this thing settled. I think we should, we have. Uh, I think we do have somewhat of an obligation to make sure that this, uh, that this entity works. Um, it was, uh, you know, a situation that, uh, was working up until the point of receivership of the city center motel. Uh, not that that was anybody's fault, but that's where, that's where it came down, they were the ones that were paying the loan back. And, uh, that is gone and so somewhere we need to pick up the paces. I, um, I would like to see us stay away from those types of loans. I don't think we should have ever gotten into the, those types of loans to begin with, I don't know who thought that was a good idea, but it was not. And, and we're in that situation now, I just think that we need to, there needs to be a little more planning on finding out what it is the county can afford. So I think there needs to be some sort of, uh, meeting with, uh, with the CAO. Uh, and, and maybe the, the auditor and finding out. You know, what it is that we could, that we can afford, uh, you know, without going to some sort of a, a budget adjustment, which we may have to do that anyway. Um, and finding out what the exact amount is, if that, if that's right, i- is that the contribution that Joel, that you came up with? Was eighty-some thousand dollars a year for five years, that's. Is that what I saw in the paperwork, I, I had a hard time bringing it up here a minute ago, but.
As far as loan repayment?
Yeah, it seems like that was an amount that was in there, did it, is that right? In your, yeah, in your spreadsheet, in the report, eighty-two, eight for loan repayment yearly. Yeah.
So in the budget?
Yeah. If we've got an amount in there that will pay the, what is the amount that's owed now roughly?
Two hundred and. Two eighty-five.
Two eighty-five and there's. A hundred thousand dollars in there? Hundred fifteen, yep. A hundred fifteen.
The, the budget, um, it was amended at the last meeting and it wasn't actually, but when I, when I put together the, the rough draft, I was thinking a lump sum. From what we had, and that's probably where the eighty-six comes from, not eighty-six every year, cuz that would obviously be a lot more than.
Oh, okay.
Than what's owed, but I'm just, my memory.
Okay, so anyway, I think that, I, I mean, that's just part of it, I think that needs to be figured out. And, and I don't have a problem with that five-year plan, because then you would be talking about, uh, you know, if we're talking about. Uh, two hundred and eighty plus some interest, probably three hundred thousand, I'm guessing, so two hundred thousand dollars. For three entities to pay over five years is probably not going to be seventy thousand dollars a year. So if we're contributing seventy thousand dollars a year and people think that we're contributing that just to pay back the loan. I think that there's a misconception there, because some of that would be to pay a director and some other things. But I still think that there needs to be an equitable arrangement there, uh, a little closer in percentages. I'm not saying that the county shouldn't contribute the most, maybe they should, uh, but, uh, maybe a little closer. Uh, at least until we get this loan paid back and, and I think that, I think that amount is gonna be considerably less. Than the seventy, uh, thousand dollars. I mean, the, I think when people look at that, they're thinking, oh, you're paying seventy thousand dollars a year to pay back a loan and that is not the case. I mean, you're, we're gonna be paying significantly less than that, uh, through, if we pool all three of these agencies together. And spread it out over five years, it's, it's not going to be, uh, the, a significant hit. Uh, but I think those are the numbers that I would like to see how that is going to work out and if you're gonna hire a director, what that cost is and how. How those contributions are gonna, gonna take care of that, I think that, uh, it would be nice to have a director and they could put all this together. Cuz I know that creates a hardship on you trying to put that together, I don't know who's gonna do it, but somebody needs to put that together so that I feel confident. And so that Supervisor Starkey feels confident, because I think we can make her feel confident if we get that number down to a, an amount. That is, uh, you know, takes care of our obligation, I think, to the Tri-Ancy and we can move forward. And we've been trying to do this, I was a member of Tri-Ancy for a number of years, uh, and while we were trying to get this all sorted out. And I can't tell you how many times we had this thing solved, I mean, we were done, it was done, solved, we're gonna be taking. I mean, we were done. It was done, solved, we're going to be taken care of. And then things change and all of a sudden it's not, and they keep pushing it out, pushing it out. We've been doing this since what, two thousand and twelve? So for ten years, they've been pushing, uh, we've been kicking this can down the road. We need to get it taken care of. And I, I think that there, I think there is opportunity to get this squared away. I just think we need to, we need to, to pull our numbers together and uh, and, and make it work.
Chris. Yeah, appreciate it. Thanks Chair. It's um, yeah, I, I could understand Supervisor Starky's concerns and I appreciate her raising them again. I guess um, what it comes down to for me is does the city, does the county, does the harbor share responsibility in driving economic development in our community? And a lot of what has taken place over the last several years, at least since I've served this board, which is a very short period of time. None of us sat on this board when this problem occurred, but we've spent an inordinate amount of time trying to fix the errors of the past. And I'm apologize to all of us for being in that position, but we're on that position. We have to solve it. But again, the question of economic development is community. Supervisor Starky mentioned that we're a small rural community. Small rural communities struggle with capturing and keeping business that's going to grow those jobs and allow businesses to thrive. And a government agency to a certain extent has an obligation to help that success take place. We arguably have changed tremendously over the past fifty, sixty years from a resource-based economy. Timber, commercial fishing, and this town has been flipped upside down completely. The sources of income that we relied on from those public lands, from those private timber industries, from that commercial fishing is pretty much gone. And there's very little of it coming back into our general fund. So we have to find ways to reinvent ourselves. And if we're going to have this joint powers authority, the tri agency with these entities and government, they're going to help drive these conversations. I do think for the small amount and even finding a director to help drive these conversations is a worthwhile investment of this organization, because if we're not doing it, then who is? Because we can't stay stagnant. Staying stagnant gets us nowhere. This tri agency, and I've, I've discussed this in the past, was instrumental in the discussion and the investment of the T O T dollar back into tourism marketing. And I could argue today, we had not seen the success of that tourism marketing dollar if that had not occurred in two thousand and seven. Today, those gains in that T O T tax are well over double what they were in two thousand and seven. The city is much, much higher than that because they have the, the heads and the beds to put people in. One of the biggest things and um, yeah, I, I didn't hear it mentioned was the effort that the tri agency went through with John Irwin. John Irwin was hired by the trade and see back when broadband was just coming on to the conversation within small rural. Well, small rural in Humboldt, Modoc, Siskiyou and other places throughout California do not have broadband. We do. And it's because of the efforts of this community, not only that allowed that bandwidth to occur with a negotiation with Charter of Communications, but also provided the redundancy we needed when that backbone was secured on P Pacific Power lines over to a Brian. And so those are a couple of examples, but I certainly, I didn't sign up for sitting on a, a defunct agency. I signed up for promoting economic development and driving that conversation in our community and I've done nothing but try to solve this issue since my time on the board. And I have found no other way to do it other than what has been put in front of you today. And I, I asked the board in a very polite but respectful manner to help those of us that have served the trade and see solve this dilemma and get back to doing what the trade and see was predicated upon, which is economic development for our community.
Thank you. Darren, did you want to add some stuff? I just, um, the big question is, um, do we believe that we could use an economic driver agency? And I believe that uh, the answer is yes. I just kind of wanted to, to echo Chris's comments about sitting on the tri agency and, and feeling very frustrated um, for sitting on the tri agency as a city council member. Um, and kind of in disbelief with what I'm hearing and thinking that I was confused and I had to say, wait a minute. Are you, are you saying that we made loans to people who wouldn't qualify, you know? Uh, that lender of last resort thing and, and everybody on the dais was you know, nodding their head, yes, yes, that went on in the past, but it's not going on anymore. I think uh, we're pretty um, pretty strongly all, all agree on, on that premise for sure, but um, I appreciate uh, in Joel's report, his opinion that um, the economic driver is best suited with the tri agency. Um, for a couple of different reasons that he spelled out, but um, I believe that we need an economic driver in this community. And uh, and that's why I am here again trying to make the tri agency a viable agency and get us out of this defunct status. I don't know any other way to do it.
Yeah, and, and I'm not disagreeing with you. I, I think, I think that there is a way to do it. I think we can do it. I think we need to get some heads together to make, make it happen. Um, um, uh, I think what we've used um, over these years because tri agency has been defunct, that we've been um, I think relying on the visitors bureau and the chamber of commerce to do our economic development. I don't think that's the place it should be. Uh, we recently uh, enhanced our contribution to them. Which um, I think maybe should have been more directed towards tri agency uh, and that economic piece uh, now, now looking back on it, but um, I, I do think there's a solution and, and I don't know who, who is it that uh, that you want from the tri agency? Who, who is that you Darren? Or are you the president? Are you the chairman? So if you would maybe meet with staff with Neil and uh, and, and the auditor and maybe Joel and maybe, maybe put our heads together and you may have to have, you know, somebody from the other entities, the city and the harbor to see about the, the percentage of contributions. If, if there's an opportunity to make some changes there. And, and then bring us back some numbers on on what we think the loan amount is and what that contribution would be. Uh, you know, rather than having that entire sum, if we're going to give them, if we're going to give them an upfront payment, that's fine. But then I would like to see what, what kind of monies we're looking at as far as a contribution, because that, that's going to be a general fund contribution to pay back that loan. We're not going to be able to use any other types of money to do that, I don't think. So that's what I would like to see and I would like to give direction to staff uh, to do that. Uh, if that works. Are we, I know we're pushing this can down the road a little bit and hopefully that meeting can happen sooner rather than later. But I think we can, I think we can put less emphasis on the loan repayment and more emphasis on, on uh, what the economic development uh, of uh, tri agency can do for this county. I think what, I think the whole thing is, you know, we have this insurmountable debt, which it's not over a five-year period, uh, you know, and uh, it, it's, I'm not going to say it's negligible. It is money that we could use other places, but it is an obligation and I think we need to stand by uh, at least our obligation to try and see uh, and then try and she should stand up for their obligation. Supervisor Starky, you got anything to add?
Well, I, I, I just go back to that with that uh, everybody should be bringing their debt to the county to pay off their debt. I mean, I just, I feel like this is just a really big mistake. Um, you know, it is, it was an action item because it says here to approve the contribution of seventy thousand dollars. So we're not doing that today.
No, that's, that's only in the, in the, in the uh, paperwork.
Okay.
That's not part of the agenda.
It's the, the agenda item.
That's the backup information.
Okay, I guess it says that was a request for board action. Approve a contribution of seventy thousand dollars to the tri agency.
But that was not on the agenda. That part was not on the agenda.
Okay.
Oh, that's in the, yeah.
That's only in the packet.
Oh, okay.
The recommendation was changed to just have it be a discussion.
Okay.
And provide direction to staff if necessary.
And, and I think Supervisor Starky, you need to understand, we have always contributed close to that amount to tri agency to keep it running. The city, the county and the harbor. We've always contributed to that.
Actually, the last time I was present, I believe that the auditor controller told me the last time they contributed was in two thousand and twelve and it was like eleven thousand dollars. So it wasn't this high.
Well, it, you need to go back the year before, two years before that on what it is, because it's more than eleven thousand dollars and it's, and it may not all come from, it wouldn't come from the general fund. That could have been a general fund contribution, but there, there.
I'll ask him again, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just still disagree, but I mean, that's why we're here, right? We can all agree to disagree, but I, I just I feel pretty strongly about this, so. And, and then, and I'm not just speaking in a vacuum. I've talked to so many community members and I don't know if we opened up for public comment or not, because I don't.
We will.
Um, but so many community members are opposed to this too, and yet here we are still just, you know, not even listening to our constituents, so. Um, I, I don't know. I'm still just, I very much disagree. I would be curious to know from Neil and I think that's the direction that you were headed is that can we even afford this? I'd like to know our C A O's uh, opinion on this as well. I don't know if today's the, the time for that. I don't want to put him on the spot, but I certainly would like to know um, if this is something that, that he agrees with as well, so.
Well, and I would uh, take issue with uh, you saying that we as a whole don't listen to our constituents and that may be your case, but it's not mine. Uh, I do listen to my constituents. Um. Um, anyway, so you'll set up a meeting Darren at some point?
Yes.
With uh, with Neil, okay?
Um, Chair, there is a tri agency meeting on Thursday, um, which is conveniently quick. Um, you know, I think all the direction I'm hearing is, is I, I understand and it's very actionable. The one question I would have is, as far as the, the split in the contribution between the agencies. Uh, what, what would be ideal? Fifty-fifty with us in the, in the city or, I mean, it's basically going to be a negotiation. What, what's, what's going to be persuasive if it comes back?
Well, I think maybe somewhere closer to, uh, you know, that maybe the county at fifty-five or sixty percent. Uh, the city uh, maybe at a thirty five-ish to, you know, somewhere in there and then the harbor at, uh, you know, the uh, they're, they probably should be in the fifteen to twenty percent range. So I don't know however you make those numbers work out. Uh, I'm not trying to pick one particular number, but um, the city certainly should be uh, should be closer to that uh, to that middle uh, number than uh, than they are. I think seventy, twenty, ten is, is a little bit too far away. I just think maybe we could bring that closer together.
Well, and based on the board's direction today, we could also look at discretionary revenues from both entities at the city and the county for T O T and sales tax and kind of come up with some percentages from there.
There you go. Yeah.
Sounds like a great idea. Yeah.
And to answer Supervisor Starky's question about what we can afford, uh, again, disdirection from the board to work with the, the auditor controller and county council and uh, go over that and see what kind of a contribution we think would be uh, appropriate for this. And it depends on also the agreement and the timeline for repayment of the debt.
Yeah, I agree. Any public comment on this item?
You guys fool yourselves here. Now, I, I can, I can tell Miss Starkey done her homework, but I can guarantee you that none of you guys have done your homework. And, but you're going to pilfer away the money again. First off, like for you to know that um, uh, the harbor district wouldn't even approve four thousand dollars to the chamber. An increase of four thousand dollars to the chamber this year. So trying to get money from the harbor when their credit is bad and they have no money. In fact, that was brought out at a meeting here recently when Alex Lima threw it in the face. That no one would lend them money. That they're not, you're not going to get money from them for to pay, we shouldn't be paying other people's bills. These people that defunct on their businesses. That's outrageous. I don't know if a preliminary injunction can be done on this, but I'm going to be looking into it. So I'm getting darn tired of you folks who don't care how you spend money off the backs of us who pay you the money. This is outrageous and no, you don't listen to your constituents. You rubber stamped all these five to twelve percent raises coming in the future. And now you're going to sock it to us for what? Four hundred thousand dollars or two hundred and eighty-three thou- whatever the money is. We don't owe that money. County doesn't owe that money. The tri agency is a failed agency and it's not going to be any better. A tiger's stripes never change. You folks need to wake up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? On this item? Okay, seeing none. Kylie, are we done?
Yes, I'm still not seeing Dr. Stutz on.
Okay. Well, we'll catch you next time, I guess. You have any kind of update Neil on COVID stuff? It just, I know that we've gotten huge amounts of cases going and a lot of uh, active cases, probably overwhelming to the
to you. Yeah, yeah, and nothing, nothing for me, but uh, Dr. Stutz did send me a text and say he was in an area. He didn't have service. So he was unable to join us. He was trying and couldn't get through.
If, if I could, I, I just want to make sure the public knows that he did yesterday switch a, a issue, a new public health order that is more in line with CDC as well as the California Department of Public Health for the five-day quarantine.
It's a PSA. It's not the public health order. He hasn't changed the order. It's a public, a public service announcement. The actual order, I think, I think they're still working on uh, modifying that.
So what was the PSA? I mean, what, why?
It does change, it does change the quarantine side of things, but it doesn't change the actual health order that's in place right now for the masking.
Oh, I meant that, that the quarantine, his requirements to follow the CDC. So that's on a call to health order? Okay, that's just a PSA. Okay.
Okay, with that, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned to our next meeting.